Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley on October 2nd at 5:34 PM. Our first presentation is going to be our business spotlight, and the name of the business is Churito Loco. If we can please roll the DVD?
Alright, if we can have the owner Marvin Chavez come up here, please? Just want to say a few words here before I present the certificate. Living up to its name, Churito Loco has food from Moreno Valley and across the inland empire, has people going crazy for their innovative, made-from-scratch churros and Mexican snacks. Located at 25030 Alicentner Boulevard, Churito Loco offers exciting twists on classic snack foods like Ilote, or corn on the cob, served street style with mayo, cheese butter, and hot Cheetos, or funnel cake topped with horchata ice cream, and fruity pebbles. But the real crowd pleaser is in the name. The homemade churros made fresh, to order in bite-sized poppers, ready to dip in your favorite sauce like chocolate or Nutella. So I'll have to stop by there, this looks really good, sounds really good. But it doesn't stop there. You can also have them in a pinwheel-shaped ice cream sandwich with flavors like bubblegum or the seasonal hit pumpkin spice latte. Or if you are a churro purist, you can also have one served in the long iconic shape with ridges covered in cinnamon and sugar and filled with guava. And then Bavarian?
Bavarian cream.
Bavarian cream, or Dulce de Leche. Oh, that one sounds really good. Yeah, Dulce de Leche, yeah. So today, we recognize Churito Loco, where you can let your imagination run wild. Okay, so congratulations again, on behalf of the city council in my office. Want to present you this beautiful certificate. And then here are the videos as well, so that way you can share through your social media as well. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you for coming today. I really appreciate the opportunity I've got with the city of Moreno Valley. Everybody has been wonderful to me, they come in. What I like about the city is that everybody comes in, when they're eating, I like to see them smile. It's a place for everybody, families, if someone could be on a date, whatever it is, I just want to see that smile at the end of the day because it's sweets, which I like sweets. Now they don't have to go to theme parks, just come to Moreno Valley, and we have it there. So pretty much thank you for everybody and appreciate the opportunity.
Alright, and we're gonna take a picture right over here.
Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing your business to Moreno Valley, and it really, really has very rich desserts, so you gotta visit at least once. Our next proclamation is recognizing National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. If we can please have the representatives from Trinity Baptist at the microphone, please? You can all come up, please join us. Thank you for joining me today, and you're very welcomed by the city council today, as we recognize National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Every October, we as a nation take the month to think about the lives that have been touched by breast cancer. We remember loved ones who have faced this disease. Some have successfully overcome the disease, but too many have lost their battle or forever been altered. Breast cancer research has grown exponentially over the past two decades, which has greatly lowered the number of fatalities caused by this disease. While the decrease in the impact of breast cancer can be counted as a success, there is still much work to be done when it comes to further reducing the impact of breast cancer on American lives. Increased awareness and outreach has led to a greater screening, but there are still members of the population who will greatly benefit from further outreach efforts and education. Further research is also needed to fully understand the causes and develop a wider array of treatments for the disease. The month of October is dedicated to raising awareness and fundraising for research and public outreach programs. Early detection and reduced risk through some lifestyle choices are key factors in increasing survival rates for people diagnosed with breast cancer, and every survival is a victory. This October, as the city council proclaims National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we are proclaiming a future with more victories, and eventually a future free from breast cancer. So with that, we're gonna present you with a proclamation on behalf of the city council and the city of Moreno Valley. It's a very nice proclamation, please say something. I'll hold it for you, I can hold it.
You know, first, I would like to thank, we thank God for everything that we do in Moreno Valley. Trinity Baptist Church is a church where everybody is somebody, and these are nurses from Trinity Baptist Church, each and every one of us. And our goal this year is to reach someone and to be able to help someone through our breast cancer effort. We will be having our Pink Sunday on the 8th of October, that's a day that we have designated as our Breast Cancer Awareness Day. We also will be having our first Breast Cancer Walk at Trinity Baptist Church, and we are expecting Councilman Geiba to be there, and dressed in pink. And anyone else, you're quite welcome at any time to come to Trinity Baptist Church, a church where everybody is somebody.
Thank you very much.
High fives for Congress. We got the best city.
Thank you so much to Trinity Baptist for being here and accepting the proclamation on breast cancer awareness. Next on the agenda is the Public Power Week proclamation presented by Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera.
Good evening, everyone. Would all Moreno Valley utility staff please come up front and join us? Chairman Alvarado, everyone, everyone come up here, please. Okay, we all fit. We're just getting comfortable. Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the distinct honor of celebrating Moreno Valley's very own electric utility by presenting this Public Power Week proclamation. Here to accept the proclamation is Moreno Valley Treasurer Marshall Ironman, Moreno Valley Utility Division Manager Janet Olko. Moreno Valley Electric Utility is the product of two years of extensive research and consideration, and has been providing power to Moreno Valley for over 13 years. MVU is community-owned and not-for-profit, which gives our citizens the opportunity to have a direct impact on decisions that affect our community on a daily basis. Our utility commissioners and MVU staff all work tirelessly to make decisions that meet the energy needs of our growing community, to help foster that growth, and to do so in a financially responsible manner. Moreno Valley Electric Utility offers energy efficiency incentives and a solar rebate program, which encourages conservation-minded energy usage and the expansion of the use of renewable energy sources in a way that is affordable to homeowners. Additionally, there is the Higher Moval Utility Incentive, which helps business owners save money on their electric utility simply by hiring Moreno Valley residents. The proclamation of Public Power Week is a recognition of the hard-working people who helped to keep the lights on in our homes and businesses, and the citizens who take a vested interest in how such community services are provided and act to ensure that our city is poised to be an innovator in serving the needs of our community. We have the proclamation right here standing amongst us, and it reads, "Whereas the citizens of the City of Moreno Valley place high value on local control over community services, and therefore have chosen to operate a community-minded, locally-controlled, not-for-profit electric utility that allows consumers and owners to have a direct say in utilities' operations and policies, and whereas Moreno Valley Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to business development and the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim October 1st through the 7th of 2017 as Public Power Week, recognizing Moreno Valley Electric Utility for its contributions to the community, and to educate its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power, and encourage members of the community to join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration." Okay, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, just a couple brief words. Moreno Valley Utility has focused a lot on economic development and reliability for the city, and I'm very gracious to the staff, the city council, the utility commission, to accomplish these goals, along with the executive management and city manager. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone for all of the support in the Moreno Valley Utility and how they continue to serve this community. So hold the plaque and get a picture?
Yeah, can we get a whole picture?
Yes.
Okay, our final presentation is the Kitchen Substation Grand Opening, which will be presented by Councilman Ulysses Cabrera.
Did you want to just say a couple of words?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Cabrera for allowing me to speak. First of all, I want to say I'm very proud and very honored to be working with his staff, especially with Jeanette and her team, with Michelle giving me and our council the opportunity to move forward on this project in particular, economic development, and the rest of you. I just wanted to share the history, since I'm the only sitting council member that knows the history of the hard work and effort that went into this project, that are going to be cutting the ribbon, I believe, on the 3rd, am I correctioned? The 3rd of November. So this plaque is a good commemoration. So a little background history, in October of 2014, the project plan was approved to purchase the property for the Kitchen Substation, understanding that it was being used exactly for economic development and to fulfill the needs of our city and our area. When I was elected, and the mayor at that time, Jesse Molina, and I sat on the Economic Development and the Finance Subcommittee, and I was also on the Utility Commission, we then transpired to go finding a way to purchase this project without encumbering the city or Moreno Valley Utility. So, working very closely together, especially with Rick Tykert at the time, we came up with a financing plan that was unconventional by the city's standards, but it was important that we didn't put any more stress on the city and on the Moreno Valley Utility. So over the course of several months, we hashed out a plan that actually worked and it functioned well, and I'm proud to say, and I'm proud of you all for us all working together, like I said, and Michelle giving us the backing to do this, we've actually been able to complete this project within time, I know, but we didn't approve that bond until around November, so it's been about two years that this project's been completed in, and under budget, and using a bond financing less than what was anticipated to begin with, saving $1.3 million in bond financing. So it was an unconventional way, a lot of nervousness going into it, but they've accomplished it, and we worked together as a team and the staff, and I'm just saying, I'm honored and I'm proud that we're gonna be, finally, after these two years, we'll be doing that ribbon-cutting. So congratulations, Jeanette, congratulations, Marshall, congratulations, because Mike isn't here, so you get to take that congratulations as envisioned, and thank you very much, Michelle Dawson, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Geiba. I would also like to thank our current mayor, Dr. Exion Gutierrez, he's the previous council member for District 4, which is where the substation is located, and so him, along with the rest of the council that he's worked with, has been able to bring businesses, companies, residential development, which is the reason why the substation was needed, to provide power and energy to that area. And so I would just like to read a couple of words here for the grand opening of the power station. With the expansion of the City of Moreno Valley over the past several years, both in population and in economic development, the Moreno Valley Utility has seen a significant growth in customers and demand for electricity, especially in the south industrial area. This increased demand prompted the construction of the Kitchen Power Substation, which will serve some of the largest business employers in Moreno Valley, including Amazon, Deckers Outdoor, Procter &amp; Gamble, Ross, Florin Decor, Karma Automotive, Waste Management, and 2,000 residential customers. This 80-megawatt power station produces enough electricity to power 60,000 homes, and was made possible through cooperation between the city council, the utilities commission, and the executive team. Now Marshall Ironman will walk us through a brief presentation of the substation. Marshall?
As the slides come up briefly, one of the things with the utility substation is obviously we can't have the public down walking around it, but we wanted to walk you through these slides, so you can get pictures of the transformers, the switch gears, the switch yard, all of those integral pieces that many of us don't really get to see or touch down there. The big thing that this does is it takes 115 KV from Edison's distribution lines, brings it into the switch yard, converts it into 12 KV out to our citizens. And one of the things that have kept Moreno Valley Utility very reliable is the fact that once those powers come through our substation, they go underground, and that saves us in many of the emergencies where we're not seeing the blackouts, we have the increased reliability. So with that, tonight, we're actually gonna do the ribbon-cutting. The final energization of the project will be done on November 3rd, but as with it, we're substantially complete, we do have the plaque, we wanted to dedicate that tonight. So with that, I'd like to invite all of the council members down here. Remember, we're supposed to have technology problems.
Thank you, Jeanette, and thank you Moreno Valley Utilities. Thank you, Jeanette, and thank you Moreno Valley Utilities. And that concludes our special presentations. The regular council meeting will convene in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the city council, the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on October 2nd, 2017, at 6:11 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Rafael. Looks like he's volunteering. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by President Kendall Shumway from Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Also, please remain standing for a moment of silence for the tragedy in Las Vegas as well.
With everybody standing, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, our heavenly Father, we, a few of thy children, pause and petition thee at this time of great grief and sorrow, and pray for healing. There are those in our community have been touched personally by this tragedy in Las Vegas, but we have also been touched and are sorrowful for these events. Pray for the victims, we pray for their families, all those across the world who mourn with us, and mourn with those that mourn. May this bring us closer together in our shared values of caring and feeling. At the same time, we pray for the words that are behind our city council, those of "In God We Trust." We do believe that that is something that can heal, healing of senseless acts, that it will bring hope where there is hopelessness. We also pray that we will in turn look to our neighbors, those around us, that we interact with and associate with, and that we will look for opportunities to help those that are in need, for whatever that need is. We pray for wisdom for our leaders, and that we each will have wisdom in our own lives, that together we can build and grow together in a shared sense of community. We rely upon thee, we rely upon thy Son, Jesus Christ, and are grateful for his healing power. These things we pray and humbly ask for and petition thee for, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Christ. Amen.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir, madam. Yes, sir, Mayor. Councilmember Geiba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
That the record reflect Councilmember Marquez's absent. Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hakes, Nada City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Jackie Melendez, Senior Project Manager.
Michael Lloyd, Interim City Engineer.
Joel Antiveros, Chief Police.
Alonso, Division Manager, Parks and Community Services.
Alan Brock, Community Development Director.
Okay, thank you, staff. Just a friendly reminder to the audience that the city is currently offering Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out in the back of the room. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially the individuals at the podium, and also to keep your comments to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and City Council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff, and there is also a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the council as a whole. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please be ready when we call your names. And then in order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. And if there's any concerns or issues, we'll make sure to take down your name and then we'll respond appropriately. Okay, Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have three so far.
Okay, go ahead and call all three.
Rafael Burguera, Bob Palomares, and Lindsay Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, guests in Moreno Valley. I came to say thank you to the many men and women that pray for Puerto Rico, because I just finally got a hurt, I just finally heard from my father yesterday, since the day they had the hurricane. He wanted up in the hospital. Now he's in home, and it's gonna take until the 20th, he can get a flight out of Puerto Rico. Think about that. That's how long. Everything's booked, can't get out of Puerto Rico. Think about the thousands and thousands of men and women that want to leave Puerto Rico now, because there's nothing there. And what's there, people are fighting for. And when family sends money, they're being robbed. Yes, they are. I have a friend that works for the government, a personal friend, and he tells us what's going on, and he sends us pictures of what's going on. So there's a lot of things that you don't know about what's going on in Puerto Rico, because the media doesn't show everything yet, because of the power situation. So there's always the benefit of that that I'll give them. But I want to thank the men and women that go to church or stay home for their prayers, because at least mine got answered, and there's so many more that need to get answered. So thank you, Moreno Valley. I'm proud to be a Moreno Valley resident, and I'm proud to be here in California with you, and the men and women, the mayor, the councilmembers, the staff, the residents, even those that I oppose, I would always love and care for also, because I know they pray in their own way, and I'm grateful for them also. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Robert.
Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, staff. First, I want to say, I haven't been here for a while, but, man, I've seen all the good things that the city has been doing, staff working hard. They've accomplished a lot. I was thinking, man, they better slow down. Got a lot done, and it's because of, I could say personally, because I've been kind of looking at it, the three in the center here of this council. But I also want to talk about, you know, where is the respect and the morality of people that can criticize when we have, like, the grito? I know there was a lot of criticism to some of the, to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, because I seen that and I heard it, and, you know, there's people with a lot of hate in them. There's no room for that. You know, we're trying to get going here, and we're doing a good job. And, you know, it's, we gotta celebrate all cultures that live in this city and in this country. It's what it's built on, different cultures. You know, it's disturbing to hear that, you know, but it's been going on forever, and it'll continue, because some people were just raised that way. Like, it's not in their DNA, but they act like it is. You know, you're taught those things. God didn't put that in you when he created you. And another thing, like, the ladies from the Trinity Baptist Church were talking about cancer awareness, which is great. You know, the NFL is being criticized for taking a knee for what they believe. They want attention and awareness to what they're talking about, not disrespect to a flag or a country. See, they'll criticize the NFL for that, but they won't turn around and say how much millions of dollars they have raised for breast awareness, the cancer. They pour millions and millions of dollars. So, you know, if we're gonna get to the bottom of it, don't just run your mouth and try to make people believe, you know, like, hate to say it, our president is the one that's leading the racist war. He's bringing a lot of division. He's already brought it. He had, I don't know how many days to get ready to implement an action plan to go to Puerto Rico, and he waited nine days or eight days later. The hurricane, they seen it on radar. There it was. Why didn't he move in? Well, they're surrounded by water. Well, of course, we've got boats, large ships, military. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next speaker. Good evening, Lindsay.
Hi, guys. I'm here to belatedly thank Mr. Marquez for coming out and helping on the Arts Commission float for the Fourth of July. I also wanted to thank Mr. Marquez, Mr. Geiba, and Michelle Dawson, because they've already contributed to our silent auction baskets for the upcoming Arttoberfest, and hope some of you others will join them, and you can drop your baskets off at the conference desk. I have some flyers for Arttoberfest. It's this Saturday, 10 to 3. It's free. There's exhibitors who are selling their artwork and crafts. There's a kids' fun zone with arts and crafts activities there and a bike rodeo. There's food vendors, performers all morning, afternoon on the stage, and of course, you can come bid on your favorite baskets out in the lobby. And all the money goes back to the Arts Commission to help with their arts stuff. And since I have a little more time, I've been through all the applications for the commissions and boards that were done ahead of time, you know, by their deadline. And we have a lot of qualified people that I hope you'll have time soon to get through and fill the vacancies. And I'd also like the city staff to check the veracity of these applications before they're appointed, because I know on the 9-5 application, there was a false statement, and the city's rules say that, you know, you could be dismissed. Well, we don't want to dismiss people. We want everybody possible to get involved. So, you know, if you'd like my opinions, I can share my analysis, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, I know you can do it, and we just hope you'll fill those vacancies with the folks that, you know, applied by the deadline. A few other things I've been hearing from residents is, you know, we'd like to know when we can start helping on the general plan, because years ago, the public was involved early on for the whole entire process. And also, we'd like report outs on the leave of California cities, because Mr. Geiba used to give thorough reports on the votes and everything like that. So we hope this will continue with Ms. Bacca and Mr. Cabrera. Thank you again, guys, and I hope you'll donate.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Luis Palomares.
Wow, what Bob said and Rafael said, you know, such is my heart, because it's the truth facts. And it's so sad that we're already at the 12th day, that they don't have a lot of neat things they need there still. 65% don't have water, 90% don't have light in Puerto Rico, but our fake president said it's surrounded by water. What does all that mean? I don't get it. You know, because it's Puerto Rico? And he said, well, they should pay their bills. I don't know what channels some of the people watch here, but I'm watching the balance news, and wow, it's amazing. This man is dividing and conquering our nation, and it's so sad. It's really sad that people in Puerto Rico have to be begging, begging for what they need, because the mayor of Puerto Rico was on the news the other day. And in the very beginning, they're saying, oh, yeah, he's sending, we're getting this, we're gonna get that, it's on the way. You know, even the governor said that. But now, you know, she's tired of waiting. She said, what are we, third-class citizens? We're begging you. What are we, dogs? That's what she said. Dogs. I mean, these people should have had what they need a long time ago. Like Bob said, they already knew it was coming, that Hurricane Maria, and they're just dragging their feet on it. Rafael's father's in the hospital, got out of the hospital, he's 85 years old. How bad is that, that they can't get help? The hospitals, everybody needs help over there. They don't got enough generators to keep it going. They got pallets and pallets of trucks there, but they can't get them. We could send a man to the moon. How is it that we can't do this? How is it we can't send more people in there? Wow, it just shocks me to death that this is, it's a sad day for our country, our country. They're part of our country. Has everybody forgot it? I don't, I don't understand this mentality, this me, 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 and forget everybody else, but we got a fake president running that White House. We got a bigot and a racist running the White House. I don't care what anybody says, because his actions prove it over and over and over again. It's not an isolated incident, it's all the time. He says, oh, they're disrespecting the flag because they took a knee. How are they disrespecting the flag and the anthem? And our soldiers, they're not, they're trying to bring a message across. But he spins it, and he even called them SOBs, the whole word. Fire them, they're SOBs. How dare him? He don't have no respect. He don't have no respect for our flag or our nation or our country. All he wants to start is wars and capitalize off being the president of the United States, because he's making the big bucks right now. And it's sad, but it's true. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, any more speakers? Okay.
No more speakers.
Closing the public comments there. Would any councilmembers like to make their reports and comments instead of closing at this time? Okay, seeing none. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendars, sections A through D on the agenda. All items, excuse me, listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, City as Successor Agency, Housing Authority, or the Library Trustees request that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. If you like an item for discussion, just go ahead and let me know. Or for separate action, press your speaker requests. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments for the consent calendar?
None.
Okay. I entertain a motion by council, oops, by council to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Pro Tembaca, second by Councilmember Geiba. Passes, we're going on to public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on the public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the sergeant in arms. So we have the first item, and it would actually be three minutes. The first item is the public hearing to adopt substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2017-2018 action plan, and we'll have Marshall Ironman, Director of the Financial and Management Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. On September 5th, 2017, the City Council approved an initial direction for the development of a homeless-to-work program. The report this evening recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing to update the fiscal year 1718 annual action plan to add one program funded by the Emergency Solutions Grant for homeless outreach and intake services, and one program funded by the Community Development Block Grant for neighborhood cleanup. The combination of these two programs will be the foundation and funding of the city's homeless-to-work program. The comprehensive homeless work program would help prepare participants to transition to an active workforce by providing temporary employment while connecting them with social service resources to help overcome obstacles to their pursuit of gainful employment and permanent housing. The Salvation Army has expressed interest in the program and submitted a written application to participate as the community nonprofit partner for the city. Based on the Salvation Army's past experience with HUD-funded programs and providing services to the homeless, it is recommended to move forward with this partnership. Additionally, the Salvation Army will be able to provide the $80,000 of in-kind support for the program as required for the ESG grant, and they have additional personnel resources to assist in providing proper support for the homeless workforce. The city has also received different levels of interest and support from other organizations, and we will continue to pursue separate efforts with them to provide assistance for the homeless in different means. Following the City Council's action tonight to fund the homeless-to-work program, the substantial amendment for the CDBG ESG funding will be submitted to HUD for their approval. Following HUD's approval, which may take up to 30 days for their process, we'll be finalizing the contract with the Salvation Army. Now, during those 30 days, we'll be working through all the final details, so we're ready to move forward as soon as we get the approval from HUD. And one of the things that, once the City Council's approved, any efforts by the Salvation Army, they're still able to recover costs for that time period. So with HUD's approval, we hope to begin the first cleanup project and employing the homeless by the beginning of November. With that, that concludes my report, but I did want to also note that we do have representatives from the Salvation Army here tonight as well, Lieutenant David Kane and Lieutenant Kelly Kane. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marshall. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with council questions of staff, or even if there's any questions to the Salvation Army as well. You could just press your speaker button. Okay, I'm gonna go to public testimony. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Rafael Burguera.
Anyone else, or is it just Rafael?
Just Rafael.
Good evening, once again, Mayor.
Good evening, Rafael.
Staff, councilmembers, staff, and residents. My apologies for skipping. One of the nice things about getting the agenda ahead of time when you sign up, you get an opportunity to go through it. And the best part is when you go to the packet. The packet tells you a lot about the program. And Marshall mentioned some things, but there's other things that he And Marshall mentioned some things, but there's other things that he should have also mentioned that's very important to this program, okay? And I love that he also mentioned Salvation Army, because we count on Salvation Army to fulfill their promises when they ask us for donations, because that's where we help them to help others when they can't help themselves. Because there's a lot of people that need help, and sometimes they forget to help themselves, and this is what this program is about, okay? And, and as I went through the pages, and I forgot mine, but I'm glad you guys have yours, and thank you, city clerk, because she does a wonderful job, Pat, for putting the stuff up there, so I was able to look at it again. It talks about temporary work for the homeless that forgot how to go back to work. And one of the things, when we give our grant money to the Salvation Army, is to help them to at least work two days a week, five hours a day, and they'll make minimum wage so they don't have to beg or hold up a sign. You know, it's a sad thing when you see young people and elders and vets holding up signs because they need additional help. I mean, you know, two days a week can help a human being get back in their right mind once again, and I know the Salvation Army, because I knew a brother that lived in Long Beach, depending on them, who helped him with his addiction when he had it. They were the only ones that would give him a hand and a place to live when they needed him. So I know the Salvation Army works because I seen it a hand. So I'm glad it's them that are going to be running the program for us, that we can count on them, okay? It's not a lot of money, but it is a grant that has been given to us to use wisely. I hope you guys decide to vote on it. If Geiba, I mean, not Geiba, but Marquez was here, I think he would have approved it. He's a vet, he knows what the vets are going through, and he would have voted yes if he was here to make sure that the vets and everyone else that needs a chance to go back to work and to clean up their lives will get an opportunity. I did, I know.
Thank you, Rafael. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. And any deliberation, please press your button. Okay, and so I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, number two and three. Okay, move by Councilmember Geiba.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, and it's approved four-zero, so awesome. Okay, we're gonna go to item F, which there's no item there. So item G is G1. This item was the Marina Valley Logistics Center. On September 19th, the item was continued by council to the November 7th council meeting. So it's just on here as a procedural, just to let you guys know that it was continued again. So H1 is, I'm gonna have-
Mayor, we have, we have two people that submitted slips to talk on A1.
Okay, I believe since that item was moved to November 7th, city attorney?
That is correct. The item was moved to the 7th of November.
Can they speak at that time?
I, I think that they have a choice, since the item technically wasn't on the agenda, the time to, would have, time to speak on it would have been at the non-agendized item, though they have a choice, you have the choice to either allow them to speak under that because of that reason, because that wasn't made clear originally.
Well, because it wasn't made clear, we'll go ahead and let them speak.
Rafael Burguera and Kathleen Dale.
Yeah, the, what happened was they just put it on the agenda just to let people know that it's gonna be on the 7th, even though we approved it already that it's going to be on the 7th. But I think that might have confused people, people were thinking that probably we were gonna speak on it.
Even again, everyone, so I, I kind of, I'll skip it, and I'll save it for November 7th. That's the best thing to do, thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, and just so you know, that way it can be on the record.
Thank you so much, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay, you don't have to do that, okay. Good evening, Kathleen.
Thank you, I'll be very quick as well. I don't think there's any confusion, and last week you had the decision to move it to November 7th in the same place on the agenda, and you allowed people to speak, so I don't understand what the confusion is. First of all, when you heard this project the first time, I'm losing track of the dates now, you continued a public hearing to a date certain on October 2nd, so just as a procedural thing, this should be on the public hearing part of your agenda for a further continuance. And then I just wanted to ask a question because when you talked about this last time and decided to further continue it from tonight to November 7th, you said you were gonna be reaching out to the residents to speak, and I'm not aware of any residents who have been reached out to, so it would be nice if you could, at the end, give a little report on what you've done or what you intend to do. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just to clear the record, council closed the public hearing at the meeting that this item was presented. The only item that was continued was the deliberation.
And just so you know, on the item, on, when it's November 7th, it's just gonna be council deliberation because the public comment periods were already closed. That's what the city attorney was just saying. All right, so we're gonna go to reports. H1 city council reports on regional activities, we have Mayor Pro Tem Baca for March Joint Powers Commission.
Tonight, I'm providing an update on the recent March Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on September 21st and 27th. The commission approved several actions related to the parcel delivery terminal on 126.2 acres at 2801 Cromeria within the Meridian Business Park South Campus. We agreed to the sale of the General Old Golf Course to the Veterans Administration for $12.5 million for the expansion of the Riverside National Cemetery. And we also heard an update from the U.S. Veterans Hospital Project. They are seventy-six percent complete with their first phase, and they anticipate completion by January 1st.
Yes.
On the RCTC Commission, IE Commuter announced this year's Right Share Week is October 2nd through the 6th. The two biggest benefits of participating in a Right Share program are it helps the environment and saves money. However, many solo drivers still need an extra incentive to give it a try. So IE Commuter is incentivizing commuters to go green, save green. Commuters can sign up and pledge to take the bus, train, carpool, vanpool, bike or walk to work at least one day during Right Share Week and have the opportunity to win great prizes. IE Commuter is a program of the Riverside County Transportation Commission with the objective to reduce traffic and improve air quality throughout the region. For more information, please visit ie commuter dot org or call 1-800, I'm sorry, 1-866-RIGHTSHARE. Thank you.
Okay. For the Western Riverside Council of Governments, there was actually, this was on the October 7th, it was 2nd, there was a LED holiday light exchange and energy efficiency program that was done. WRCOG will also enter into an agreement with Placeworks Consulting to perform a feasibility analysis for Experience, which is a sustainability demonstration center. WRCOG is finalizing several documents related to the implementation of the TUMF program, including an updated fee calculation handbook and TUMF reimbursement manual. Both documents will be reviewed and approved by WRCOG committees before the end of the year. I also wanted to mention that as far as the LED holiday light exchange, which is basically a starter kit giveaway where California Edison and gas customers can exchange old lights, will be done on December 9th at the Marina Valley Snow Day and Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony. That completes my comments and report for the WRCOG. And the next one is RCA, which is Councilmember Geiba.
Oh, now, now we can. Just had our meeting for the RCA. It was a very short meeting, but the two major items, three, three items I'll just throw at you is one is the, what they call the local development mitigation fee collections. So for the month of August, the RCA, if you don't real, RCA purchases land to preserve species of organisms, both plant and animal. And so the August collections were $1,648,699, just specifically for the month of July, Marina Valley was very busy. Remember, these are fees you collect from the developers for these mitigations, and so the city of Marina Valley had collected fees in the, in the amount of $297,184 to contribute to the mitigation of those properties. The only one that had a larger one was City of Riverside at $674,920, which means that we're pretty active in our community with our developments. The other item that was on the agenda was the, gotta find it, I'm just gonna go through this for you. Just had it. Was a resolution, Resolution Number 2017-006, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority declaring support for the establishment of a national wildlife refuge within the boundaries of the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. This will be more out to the east side, and the reason is we're trying to make more area. Now, this is just now a study for all intents and purposes. It's now being done, it's not cast in stone at this point. So all the resolution does is it says, "Support for the establishment of," and so now the study will continue to go forward. The last and final thing was property acquisitions to date. Fifty-six thousand acres have been acquired so far, that's thirty percent of the needed, so I guess it's a long way to go. So there's, that's only thirty, thirty-seven percent of the total acquisitions that we're trying to get to. So that's the RCA report, thank you.
Councilmember Geiba, go ahead, if you could give your SCAG report, please, because there's no school district.
No, thank you very much. All right, and I'll combine the other one for you, too. SCAG, there's not much going on because I have a SCAG meeting this Thursday. So as usual, Rafael, 6:20 the train leaves from San Bernardino in the morning, you're welcome to join me for the day, and anybody else who'd like to go and see what it's like to go to Los Angeles and spend a day. I actually sit, sit on two of the major councils, but I'm there for the three, all three of them. So it's a long day, I call it my SCAG day. But I did meet with the, I'm on the SCAG Legislative Action Committee, so we met on a variety of things. SCAG's main concern is transportation, and that's the main legislation that we're all the time, many times looking at. In addition to that, I also sit on the League of Cities Legislative Action Committee, and that's coming up this Wednesday. So we'll be looking through several bills, and of course, the city, the League of California Cities is more concerned with a variety of issues that affect our cities, so I'll be there for you on that one. Nice piece of information I want to pass on, I'm excited about this. On November the 14th of this month, we've got a study session, Michelle is at, that's, told me that's cast in stone now, and I've invited Lucy Jones, and Lucy Jones has graciously accepted that invitation. Now, for those of you who don't know who Lucy Jones is, she's normally known as the Earthquake Lady. And so SCAG has, representing what they call the Earthquake Sustainability Initiative, and they want to start working together in a regional capacity in case we have one of these huge problems with, if the San Andreas Fault goes. So that'll be the start that I'm trying to drive forward. I've been working with some other regional individuals from other cities and other districts and other regions, I've been reaching out, and they're all on board so far. We'll get a chance to have that meeting, and we can all come together and start building a community. Abdul is on board with, we've already had our meetings on that, so he's familiar with what's going on. It's an emergency for long-term, understand, long-term sustainability. What we're seeing Rafael in Puerto Rico, what we're seeing down in the Southern Gulf regions, when these catastrophes happen, we have to be able to recover or at least survive for periods of time until we can recover. And that comes with preparation, and so it's my desire to try to drive this earthquake, San Andreas Fault issue, so that we have a regional plan for sustainability in the event that we lose electricity, gas, water, et cetera. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of, Martin, when, right? So that, that's an exciting thing coming up via SCAG's initiatives. So I'll keep you posted on that, but put that date down, November the 14th, it's a study session here. Lucy Jones will have her presentation and invite all of the local community. So I will be, from now until then, I'll be working to bring some coalition of individuals from the region together so that we can begin building that, that team, okay? So thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. City managers' report?
No report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. City attorneys' report?
No report this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, this brings us to reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. I don't think we've ever had a council member that's really spoken earlier. I think we've all wanted to speak at the end.
That was Ladonna's thing, I think she always wanted to speak first.
Okay, so Councilmember Geiba, your closing comments?
I couldn't be happy to do that. First of all, coming up on this Saturday, the 7th, I have another Java with Jeff. I'm trying to have those more frequently so that I can educate the population as to what's going on in our city on a one-on-one basis. It'll be at the Paris Crepes in the Canyon Springs Shopping Center on the corner of Day Street in Ironwood from 9:00 to 11:00. And I will, and there'll be a couple of the staff, they always like to come and help it, help me out on that. Someone from finance will be there, and somebody from economic development will be there. So please come, the Crepes, that's how you say it, right, Crepes and coffee are on me. So, you know, it's out of my discretionary fund. I'm gonna ask, I'll finish this up, and then I'm gonna ask Mike Lloyd to please give just a quick update, because I normally go to Mobility 21 in Anaheim, do you mind, Michelle? And what I did is I, I couldn't attend due to some issues that I couldn't make, so I asked Michael Lloyd to attend on my behalf, and I'd like him to share, but I'll finish this up, and then you can be the final portion of it and just give a little saying. We worked real hard on these, and Marshall did a great job. From the CDPG grant program, and if you can home in on this, we developed these local resource guides. Now, the police have taken a lot of mine already because they like to hand them out to the homeless, and this is the resource guide that we worked on those first couple of years, remember, the CDP? And I gotta tell Marshall, he's done a marvelous job. So this resource guide is broken down into different categories, shelters, and it has the names, the addresses, the phone numbers, emergency housing, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got more of these on, on order, right? These are a marvelous resource for the community at large, so please try to get yourselves some hands on these, and some of you, especially the nonprofits, should have some of these together. We worked on this for a while, and now it's out, this is the city of Marina Valley, every year, we put out, Marshall's team puts out this document called Citizens Guide to the Budget, something we worked on very hard so that the, being an educator, I think the public needs to understand how the budget works, and so these are very simplified guides. They are available here onsite, am I correct? We can get those anytime, so that the public can come and get them and start learning more about how we do our budgets. The other one is what we call the PAFR, when we did our, our CAFR, which is our annual audit, we requested that we work on something that's very simplified, because if you guys haven't seen the CAFR, it's about this thick, all right? So it's a pretty thick document, but Marshall and his team has done a wonderful job of putting together a very simplified version so that the public can understand what the annual audit is all about. Another one that came out of all that work that we did on the, on the bond stuff with the Marina Valley Utility, that drove us forward to being able to compile all of our bonds and how we're doing them, because you don't want to be in a position where financially you're gonna be hurt. So again, working together with the Finance Department and Marshall over the past couple of years, we came up with a bonded debt program. This, this tells us all about our city's bonded debt, very simplified for the public to understand. These are all available for you, so if you want to educate yourselves. And last but not least, this is something that we worked on with Jeanette when I was on the- when I was on the Utility Commission, is we now have the, here's the 215, 216 Annual Report. So the public understands how we're doing with our Marina Valley Utility. So this one is also available for you to learn more about. Education for me is very important. The public needs to understand, you can't make decisions and help us make decisions if you don't have the information. So all these have been generated in order for the public to easily understand what's going on. So please pick yourself up some of these. They will also be available at my Java with Jeff, so that you can get them when you come and see me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, just wanted to comment on a couple of things here. First of all, I want to thank City Manager Michelle Dawson. I requested an update on the repairs to the fence over on La Salle in front of Rancho Valley High School. And she's been, she's been on top of that. So I actually passed by there, I believe it was two days ago, and it's fixed. So it looks back to normal, good as new, so thank you for that. Also, regarding some comments that were made about the Marina Valley Logistics Center, I will be out in that neighborhood next weekend to speak with residents about the project. I'm ready to hear some more opinions on that, see what residents have to say. So I'm looking forward to that next weekend. Also, I would like to say to Ms. Dale, Kathleen Dale, I requested a meeting with you today. So hopefully you should be receiving something. I think your email box or something was full, so, or your voicemail box was full. So I just wanted to let you know about that, I look forward to sitting down with you. And last but not least, the Homeless to Work Program. I'm real excited about that, I know we're all looking forward to that. Residents have been talking about that and asking for it for a very long time. So any opportunity that I get to volunteer, I will be out there, I want to get my hands dirty. I want to help people, that's why I'm here, to help make our city a better place. And so, looking forward to that. And Lieutenant Kane and his wife aren't here anymore, but I want to thank them as well. They're amazing people, amazing individuals, and they have a heart for these kind of things. So I'm really looking forward to that Homeless to Work Program. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Yes, I also want to say thank you to the Salvation Army for stepping up to the plate and taking this endeavor on. It's very important, I know that there's never gonna be 100% satisfaction with everyone out there. And there's criticism about, you know, putting our homeless to work. It's a voluntary program, and anybody can benefit from it if you're homeless. Let's give them that opportunity, and I want to thank the Mayor for bringing this to the city. And also wish the best of luck to this program, because I think it's very needed. There's a lot of need out there, and hopefully we can fill that need. I also want to say to Rafael Burguera that your family is in our prayers, and all of Puerto Rico, Texas, Florida, and especially today with what happened with Nevada, with Las Vegas. You know, what can we say? What can we say? It's, there's no words for the devastation that took place, the inhumanity, the madness that took place, well, actually it was last night, but what we woke up to this morning. So with that, I just want to say that our police officers are out there, they're doing their best. There are some crimes that even if you ask them are not preventable, because we're not inside homes, we're not inside, you know, people's heads, we're not mind readers. But we do the best we can to keep this community safe. And I think that it is a safer community today than it was a few years back. I also want to say that, thank God, we're in the fall, in autumn, and we have the summer behind us. I do have some concerns with how we supported the drought. I think we said go brown, support the drought, or some slogan like that. And some of the community is complaining or concerned that they're being, getting tickets or citations from our code enforcement, if we can look into that. Because, I mean, we told them conserve water. So our, I mean even mine, my grass died because we turned off the sprinklers. So let's be a little more conscientious about what we're doing out in the community. If people are starting to grow their grass back, I can understand that. But if there's, you know, because they can't afford the water, what do you do? So we need to look at that, maybe have a report back at the next meeting regarding what we can do for our community that has let their lawns die, or, you know, nice gardening. I'm concerned about that. And I just want to say that Marina Valley is moving forward. We have new restaurants, it's becoming a more vibrant community. And I hope that you stay on this side of Day Street, go to Piology, to Popeye's Chicken, you know. We don't need to cross the street on the other side of Day, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tembaca. I just wanted to say I'm really excited about the Homeless to Work Program as well. I know that's been a lot of work, especially at the staff level too, meeting with the Salvation Army multiple times, Waste Management, various partners to get the program up and running. And so they were very excited to be here as well. And I think it's going to take all of us in order to make the program work. And, you know, we have to remember that the reason why we want the program to work is to help the homeless population. So to provide those wraparound services, really figure out, you know, how we can give them the right resources in order to get them on their feet. So it's going to take all of us to embrace it and to help the Salvation Army find where the homeless are actually located. I mean, they're gonna do a job of going out there and finding them, and then offering these assignments to them, and going through the whole intake process and providing the services. But I think also, they need our help too, as well. So I want to say that Roy Blackard, who helped with this idea as well, is willing to take that on as well. And so, and I know other community members as well that are willing to go out in the community and figure out, okay, where the homeless are located. So I want to say thank you to all of the community members that are willing to do that. I also want to thank the staff as well for their work with the Latin Film Festival, which is coming up October 27th through the 29th, which will be a Friday through Sunday at the Harkins Movie Theater. And there will be an art walk as well. This Friday I'm having a business roundtable with various businesses in the business community, just to hear from them, you know, about their needs. And then also to let them know about the services that we're providing at the city, like for example Hire Move Out 1, 2, Hire a Grad, those kinds of programs to incentivize local hires. And I just want to close in memory of the Las Vegas victims tonight for the cruelty that, I mean, that was just terrible cruelty. There's no words that we can express how we feel. But let's close in memory of the Las Vegas victims tonight.